Everybody ready? Everybody, let's do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, ready to go? City council meeting for November the 12th, 2019. Call to order and a roll call. All the council members are here except for Richard Nielsen, which is out on medical. Our city attorney, city engineer, and city administrator are all present. Okay. Any citizens' comments?
Just a quick question. Will we have an opportunity to discuss each line item as we get to it or do we need to make comments now?
Yeah, your request is on the agenda. So, yep.
Okay. Is that it? Anybody else? Okay. And adopt the agenda. Is there any changes on that? None? Okay. Consent agenda and approval of minutes and appointments and financial. Do that all at one time. Motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Got that out of the way. Okay, presentation of public hearings. It's going to, and the first is a presentation by David Anderson, Livewell, Goodview County County Attorney. David?
So I'm gonna get your P D up here, PowerPoint up here.
Okay.
The file format isn't gonna open.
All right. I have it right here.
I can try it.
That's okay.
I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get it up.
I made copies also, so I can.
Oh, did you? Okay. We have copies if it's just, um, these are packed.
Kinda weird, remember?
We've got, yeah. We've got, we have a bunch of stuff.
Good, yeah, we got everything. Good. All right, well, mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for giving me this opportunity to present to you. For the past six years, I've been the coordinator of Livewell Goodview County, and we've been working to make it easier and safer for our residents to walk, buy, eat nutritious food, and live tobacco-free. Over the past 20 years, a lot of different people and organizations have been working hard to reduce tobacco's harm. The percent of adult Minnesotans who smoke cigarettes have dropped to 13.8%. The percent of eighth, ninth, and 10th, 11th graders who have reported smoking cigarettes has dropped to an all-time low of 5.3% of 11th graders, 3.1% of 9th graders, and 2.4% of 8th graders. Rental property, multi-unit housing, work sites, colleges, universities have implemented smoke-free policies, tobacco-free policies, and e-cigarettes just this past spring were included in the Clean Indoor Air Act. So, a lot of great work has happened. However, tobacco still is the leading cause of preventable death and disease with an estimated medical cost of $3.2 billion annually spent on that, and cigarettes kill more than half their users, with 6,300 Minnesotans dying each year. We have a new challenge. It's e-cigarettes or vaping. Among Minnesota students, e-cigarette use has increased or used five times at a rate compared to conventional cigarettes. 8th graders, the use of e-cigarettes has nearly doubled since 2016, and most students who use e-cigarettes get them from their friends. The big concern with e-cigarettes is nicotine. Nicotine harms the brain and primes our youth for addiction. So, today, e-cigarettes deliver high levels of nicotine, and if you've seen the pod that they use in the Jewels, that little pod contains as much nicotine as a pack of cigarettes. So the nicotine is highly addictive. It can change the brain chemistry, and youth who use e-cigarettes are more likely to smoke cigarettes in the future, potentially because of the addiction. It could lead to using other harmful chemicals. Another concern about the e-cigarettes and the vaping are the lung injuries that have been in the news lately. Nationally, there's 2,051 cases of lung-associated injuries and 39 deaths. In Minnesota, there's been 110 confirmed or probable cases with another 39 under review, and unfortunately, we've had three deaths in the state of Minnesota. So what can we do to protect our kids and make a big impact? On the fourth page of your handout, it talks about the options for policies. Currently, the tobacco policy here in the city of Kenyon has been updated in the last couple of years. It's good, but it could be stronger. I don't think we need to look at density or proximity of where they're selling, but we could look at the age of the seller, training for the local businesses, a flavor policy, restricting flavors being sold in the community, and then tobacco 21. And in my opinion, that would probably have the biggest impact if we raised that age to 21 to buy tobacco products. 95% of addicted adult smokers have started before age 21. So if we can keep our youth from smoking, using e-cigarettes before they're 21, there's a greater chance that they will not use those later on in life. So, that is just a real quick overview. If you're interested in updating your policy to protect our kids, and when we're talking our kids, we're talking, you know, middle school, high school-age students that are getting e-cigarettes and using them, that I'd be happy to work with the staff and strengthen the policy and present that updated policy at a future council meeting. So, yep.
You have stats here where the average users in kids are 14, 15, and 16-year-olds. They're getting them now. What impact do you think moving the age from 18 to 20, or 21, is gonna have on that? I mean, they're still getting it. They're gonna get it.
They're giving it because they know other people, friends, or relatives who are 18 or older that can get it. By raising that age to 21, there's not a lot of 13, 14, 15-year-olds that are hanging out with 21-year-olds. So, you're reducing the chance of those younger kids having access to e-cigarettes.
Okay. The other part of this is, I mean, what's to stop that getting hitch over Wamango and getting them over there?
We are in the process of working with all our communities and having them also explore raising their age to 21. Same thing with the chip coordinator over Rice County, they're also working with their communities.
I was gonna say, can't we do this as a county thing, not a city?
Each city in our county licensed the tobacco retailers. So each city would have to adopt that policy. County, we license retailers in Belchester, Big Creek, Front Neck, and Welch. So of those four communities, there's one retailer that sells tobacco products. So if we had county-wise, and we're exploring that at the county level, that would only affect that one retailer. We could wait for the state to adopt tobacco 21. There's been conversations last session of doing that. We could wait for the federal government to raise that age. If you've read lately, President Trump has talked about raising the age to buy e-cigarettes to 21. We could work a lot faster locally and make this happen instead of waiting for state or federal government to make those changes.
David, what level has to take action in order to prevent sales over like Amazon? Would that, would a state law do that, or would that be a federal law?
That, I believe, is a federal law.
Okay.
The people that make those policies and are working on that right now.
Yep. Because that's gonna be a challenge.
Right.
I mean, that, you know, I teach kids and I ask them, and they can get it over the internet just as easy as, you know, they could get it from a buddy. So I think it'd have to be a coordinated effort if our goal is to really target the vaping from taking off, because amazingly, Amazon, they're a profit-maximizing firm, and they aren't worried about who they sell to.
There must be some inroads being made, because I think today Jewel announced that they were landing out 600 people.
Okay.
So, that's good news.
That is good news, and, you know, Jewel has now stopped selling their flavored pods in stores. They, I just read they're gonna take menthe off the market, but they're still leaving menthol on there, and there's not much difference between menthe and menthol. So, you know, some companies, Jewel, Walmart, decided as their organization that they were not gonna sell e-cigarettes. Inroads are being made, but we need to take a look globally and make some adjustments too to protect our youth. And there are a lot of moving parts to this, and I agree that, you know, we have to work at all of them, and this is just a starting spot.
Is there anybody in Kenyon that's on?
Super America does.
They are?
Yeah. They have some Jewels, and then they have some other product there. You can go there tonight and buy, it's not a Jewel, it's a different product, for a dollar. So if you wanna, wanna give it a try, you don't have to spend a lot of money to do that. I'm joking.
I'll just stand where the dent shop.
But that's part of the market, and it appeals to the kids.
Where the church, yeah.
And it's the products that are very inexpensive compared to cigarettes. And when you talk to students, and Dan, you might be able to back me up on this, they don't wanna smoke cigarettes. We've done a great job of educating them to the danger of that. They don't perceive e-cigarettes as smoking cigarettes. They don't perceive it as a dangerous activity, and they believe that, you know, they can purchase, you know, pods and juice that is nicotine-free, and that's not true. There's nicotine in all of it, and nicotine is so addictive, especially for our young kids, that it takes, you know, a week to two weeks for them to get addicted. And if you've ever been addicted to nicotine, you know how difficult it is to kick that habit. And so now, you know, these big tobacco companies have done their work in a whole new generation of our kids, you know, are already addicted. So we do need to, you know, work with them, and get them help also. And there are programs out there designed for teenagers who are addicted to nicotine and we're getting that information out of them.
Council, would you like to pursue this rather with you, David, and Mark, getting some kind of workings together on this, see what we can do for the city to tell?
So, tonight, basically, David was kinda just giving an overview of what he's working on. I would tell you that probably we can't really say as far as the next direction goes. And we could put it on another agenda to talk about, to discuss some more, you know, if there's interest or whatever in it, but this is really just a presentation, so probably it's not a lot of latitude as far as other talking about.
Well, I wanna see what they have to feel, if that is a good direction.
I could see putting a future agenda and discuss that.
Yeah, I'd be up for more discussion. I'm kinda torn on the whole thing. It's a great idea, all for reducing the availability and, you know, kids, I was a smoker for 40 years, I know exactly what you're talking about with nicotine. The only thing, I'd look at it, go, I don't wanna say it wastes of time, but, I mean, if kids want something, they're gonna get it, whether they're 20, they're 21, or maybe 20.
I did have an opportunity to talk to some other coordinators from communities that already passed tobacco 21, and I said, have you, you know, has the school district seen the difference in high school and in the whole? And they both reported that there's been a big increase in usage in middle school. And so it does make a difference as far as those 14, 15, 16-year-olds having access to it.
Yeah, the, you know, even Jewel, hopefully they're being sincere about it, but they agree it should stay out of the hands of kids. I mean, they sort of, you know, they wanted to do that too. I don't know if they wanna try real hard, but they at least are saying that, you know. I think the problem with allowing 18-year-olds to get a hold of it is that there are still probably 18-year-olds in school, and that's where the pipeline, you know. So, but I would prefer to see a coordinated effort. It would, you know, I like the idea of a Rice County, Goodview County, or, you know, make it consistent, and then I think we'll see results if we can, if we can do it that way. So, but I, yeah, I'm fine with, that would be more discussion on the Tuesday, Sunday and Thursday.
Yeah, somewhere, maybe you can coordinate what.
Yeah, David and I could talk, maybe, you know, in the next couple of months, we could pull together some more.
Right, that's how you have more information.
Options, information, yes.
Okay.
Great, all right, thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay. Well, we'll get on with it. Next one on there is engineering, and the first one is Second Street Sanitary Sewering.
Council, uh, these are on there. Community council, good to be back. I didn't know I was gone last month, so it feels like it's been a while since I've been here with you. You know, Derek and I were talking, Derek's with me again later. We haven't known Derek here over the last handful of weeks. We were looking at the, there's a lot of engineering activities going on in the city. We've actually got everything, full gamut, from looking at issues that, you know, may not even become projects yet, all the way through, you know, design, construction, and warranty work on projects that happened two years ago. So, we have a lot on the agenda tonight to talk about, so we'll try and get through to this as quickly and efficiently as possible. The first item, well, there is a non-dated memo in your packet which kinda summarizes all of the items that are on the agenda tonight, and we've also got some follow-up, more detailed information behind the summary. The first item is the Second Street Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, and an update on the construction of that project, and also the latest pay request, that's up for consideration of approval. And Derek has been working with contractor closely on that, so I'll let Derek walk through the details of the construction status and the proposed requested payment.
So, as far as what's going on right now with that project, as you can see, they're pretty well bucked up. They had that last bit of sidewalk that was, that was helped for quite a lot, but it's now done. Basically, the only thing that's actually left to do is they've got a little bit of detail, which you might notice a little bit low right near the section of Second Street and Red Wing Avenue. So, in terms of what's left to be completed, it's a very minor amount of work that we expect to be finished up probably next week or so. It's just a matter of, when can the contractor get out there to do that last bit of work? In terms of the actual pay estimate, or that pay application that's included in your packet, this will be partial pay estimate number three, this is not the final payment. So this includes all work up until November 1st, it's like just a couple of days ago here. Realistically, there's only one or two little minor items that are left to be paid after this pay estimate. So, in terms of the items, the work items that were included in this project, most of it is showing up in this last pay estimate. So, I guess in summary, the total for this pay estimate is $67,044.17. The projected project total that I looked at, putting this one together, was coming in at about $225,000, just under $226,000, which is about $10,000 over the original bid. And this is one thing that we had kinda touched on a little bit during the previous meeting. I had mentioned that there's gonna be some additional costs associated with the subgrade correction out in the street, and Mayor Henke, you had asked specifically for a breakdown of those costs. On the last page of that pay estimate, it shows those items that were included in this. So I just wanted to point out, you guys aren't paying for any of the pavement that was pulled out, basically just for the additional rock and excavation that they had for those items. So, that overage of about $10,000 is about 5%. Couple other small items that I'll notice, that you'll notice in there, is there's a deduction for liquidated damages since the project is finished quite a bit later than what the original contract date is. So that amount of $34,000, about $400, is what's calculated following the guidance of the contract. Probably be discussing that a little bit more detail in coming weeks, but that's what is calculated at the moment. Last other item that's on that pay estimate is the retainage. Normally, that retainage on a partial pay estimate is 5%. In this case, since the project is substantially complete, there was a recent statute change up at the state that requires that we reduce that down to 1% plus 250% of value of any remaining punch list items. So, very specific in terms of what you can retain now. Realistically, it doesn't make much of a difference in this case, it's a smaller project, but what's being retained right now is about $1,700. So all that adds up to that final payment, or not final payment, but this partial payment of $17,044.
I think the, I think the emphasis, all of what Derek said is, that even though the projected total cost of the construction is coming in, projected to be over the final contract amount, the actual amount of out-of-pocket cost to the city for the contract right now is still only a total of $188,000. So you're still about $17,000 under the total, and with the liquidated damages and the retainage that we're showing, that amount will stay under that contract until those months get finalized. So, at least for the action tonight, you're still well under the construction budget.
Any questions?
I just noticed, in our copy, did you get a sign from the contractor?
Yes, I have signed copies, he provided them after we sent them.
Okay. Now, the one in the packet just shows our signature, but we have received a copy back from the contractor with the signature on it.
I have to have a motion on the pay.
I'll move that we approve the pay request, estimate number three, the amount of $67,044.17.
Also, okay. A motion been made, and second it for estimate pay of number three of $67,044.17. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye passes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is Red Wing update.
Red Wing Avenue, this is a fairly straightforward update. Derek can certainly write additional detail that he wants, but Red Wing Avenue, as you know, we've had a lot of conversations about that, we've had some public informational meetings. We completed the feasibility report, had the public hearing. After that public hearing, the council authorized us to go ahead and put together the detailed plans and specifications to solicit bids from contractors. So right now, we're just in the process of working on those plans and specs. They're gonna take a while to work through all the details of that and get those documents put together. Right now, we're about 25% done with those plans, which is right about on track. We figured it would be a four-month process to get those done. We've got a utility design meeting coming up, and also meeting with the private utilities, the small utilities, to get information that we're gonna need for putting the plans together. So, we'll just be continuing to work on those, and I believe we're, February, I think we're targeting to have the plans ready for approval so that we can go out for bids in March and be ready for construction in summer of 2020, assuming everything falls into place and we get prices that are acceptable to the council. So, Derek, anything further you wanted to add on Red Wing? So, really no action needed on this project tonight, just more of an informational update. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer those.
Any, anyone say I don't have any either? Or number C there? You got, the street improvement project?
The First Street Improvement Project, this is a project that was constructed a couple of years ago, and we noticed last fall, fall of 2018, that we're starting to get some settlements in the trenches. When you drove down the street, you would feel some periodic dips in the pavement, and we started to notice that the castings and the manholes were starting to stick out of the pavement a little bit because the pavement around it was settling. So, we did some checking on the dates of the project, and we determined that the project was still under warranty. So we did notify the contractor last fall, there's a copy of that letter in your packet. We notified them in November 29th, so almost a year ago, that these settlements are showing up. and they were covered under warranty in the project and we noted the specific referenced uh, sections out of the contract and put them on notice that we were, we would expect those to be repaired at no cost to the city as part of the warranty process. So through twenty nineteen, um, we were able to work with the city to identify exactly where those trench settlements were. Uh, Derek and Wayne met out on site with the contractor's representative, kind of went through and negotiated back and forth on the settlements and which ones were severe enough to warrant uh, the repairs that were necessary. And then in uh, October of this year, we put together a letter to document those findings. And that letter basically lays out the locations of the settlements that they are to repair. Um, the the, I think, believe there's six total? Seven total, yeah. Uh, varying in size from about twenty twenty five feet to about ninety three feet long. Um, full width of pavement, uh, primarily happened over the service trenches. The the longitudinal trenches where they put the mains in are easier for them to compact. It's, they have more difficulty when they have to do the the service trenches out to the individual houses because those trenches are shorter and they're a little more narrow, so it's harder for them sometimes to get the compaction. So most of the settlements we saw were in those service types of trenches. We did have a few settlements around the manholes. Um, but we wanted to document this so that obviously the work, it's too late in the season to get the work done now, this year. But the work is going to be done in twenty twenty. We wanted something in writing that identified the settlements that had been agreed upon and that was signed off on both by the city and by the contractor so that everyone has the same documentation in their file. So next year, when the time comes to do this work, uh, nobody can claim that they don't have the consistent paperwork. So that letter was put together, it's in your packet, it was dated October eleventh, it was sent to the contractor. Contractor has signed it and returned it to us. So it's really um, just a matter of, we don't really need official council action to proceed with the uh, with the repairs, but it's something we wanted to bring to council attention to make sure that we had um, your concurrence for us to go ahead and and proceed with those repairs uh, next year.
Any idea once they start, how long it'll take, roughly?
Hmm, depends how quick they're at the work, but.
It it's something that they could do in a single day, realistically.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is not prolonged?
No, no, it's realistically probably a day to do the removals and the prep. And if they're ready, they could pave it that same day. It might be one day to prep it, second day to pave it, that that type of.
Perch on kind of thing?
No, they could probably, if if they'll want to get them all done as quickly as possible, they'll want to get a crew in.
They're not going to open the entire road all the way back up, they just, you saw eleven cores of asphalt, three of football.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So it'll go pretty quick.
After we got to that, then I I drove down to First Street and it happened to be at night. And you feel, you feel, if you're just driving along, I'll say.
Well, you can notice the the the, the first east block has the most settlements. That's because it has the most services, the houses are the most dense there. As you get the farther block, the third block over there by the park, has uh, less and less settlements. So it gets better as you go further west, I mean, because there's less and less of those service trenches. So everything is in good shape with this one. Contractor has agreed to do the work, it'll be done at no cost to the city, it's it's considered warranty work. We've got their signature on the the document, so everything is ready to go as soon as uh, the conditions allow next spring.
Good. Any other questions? Okay, I'll go on to D, FEMA Disaster Relief Program grant.
FEMA Disaster Relief Program Grant, uh, Wayne and Derek have been working on this one for a little while, so I'm going to let Derek uh, present this one. I know he's got a, um, in addition to the summary uh, report that's in the in the packet, there was a longer letter as well, about a three or four page long letter. I believe Derek has a copy of a map here that was supposed to go with the letter that um, someone didn't make it in the packet, so we'll handle a copy of that map to, for reference.
Just a quick note, um, for Site Two.
The numbers don't add up.
Should be twenty eight, six, right?
Correct.
Yep. Just making sure.
They do add, the the total in the bottom right hand corner, the one to nine five is correct.
Yeah.
Yep, it's just the the total of that that column under Site Two is.
Yep.
So we had uh, kind of talked through some of the details on this during the last city council meeting. Um, but realistically, uh, what we've been doing, we've been uh, kind of pre meetings with uh, FEMA uh, throughout this uh, point. Just kind of trying to scope out this project and figure out what this one can be eligible for disaster relief uh, that's become available. Um, so what you see up on the screen is in terms of, you know, this project scope, um, uh, what FEMA has requested is that we break this project scope into uh, two different types of projects. So item one would be the repairs. So with any of these repairs, what we're doing is uh, we're taking what's out there now and restoring it back to a condition that's similar to uh, the conditions prior to this flood event that happened this past spring. So that's that's item one, that's really the primary purpose of the funding that's uh, available through the federal disaster relief uh, programs is to restore back to a previous condition. They also have additional funding available for what they call mitigation, which is basically for any improvements that we can do to these areas to uh, prevent these types of issues from occurring um, into the future. So in terms of what's actually detailed out in this table here, uh, for the actual project cost, that's why I broke it out between uh, repairs and mitigation. Um, just to kind of talk through what's included in that map that I just handed out. Um, for the actual repairs, uh, you want to strike as Site One on that map. Basically, what's uh, what's proposed uh, with that project would be excavating that stream bank back to a stable slope. So basically during this past uh, uh, high water event, there's significant amount of erosion and now there's basically a vertical soil wall at the north edge of the park in that area. That that area isn't stable and it's going to continue to erode every time the water comes up. So we're going to cut that back to a a a stable slope, four to one slope or three to one slope, um, to prevent that type of issue from happening again. We'll also have to do some minor work with the storm sewer in that area to reset some, uh, reset some pipe that exists. Um, uh, so that's the extent of the repair work uh, associated with Site One. Um, it also included uh, in that map, there's some mitigation uh, uh, work that will include the addition of some rip raft uh, uh, along the edge of the stream. That's the mitigation work, it's a smaller uh, portion of the actual cost, but that that that's really, that's basically a, you know, basic summary of 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 uh, the scope work intended for Site One, which is the stream bank. Site Two uh, is uh, that uh, eastern access road into the park. There's a significant amount of erosion um, uh, in that area during this this past spring. So with that, what we'll be doing is is excavating out a lot of the rock that that washed out into that area. Um, uh, replacing topsoil, reseeding most of that area that's washed out. And then also excavating a ditch that will allow any water that's traveling down there in the future to be contained within a channel where it's closely built, where we can control it. So that's the repair work associated with that one. The mitigation work uh, that we requested is uh, the installation of some uh, some rip raft to try to control some of that erosion that's happened uh, in some of the areas where water velocities could be a little bit higher. Um, you'll also notice uh, the mitigation for Site Two, uh, we've got uh, insulation of a new culvert. Uh, that's basically just intended to get water from, uh, I don't know, different directions, but from the south side of that access road to the north side. Just to prevent that erosion from happening into the future. So uh, what's been planned out here um, is based on our discussions with FEMA as to what's eligible for funding. So through that federal disaster relief, um, that federal funds, uh, the federal fund will pay for seventy five percent uh, of the project cost. Um, in this particular event, there's also state funding available that would pick up the remaining twenty five percent, cover basically one hundred percent of the project cost. So if all goes as planned with them, we don't find out if there's anything in here that's, you know, eligible, uh, the city's cost would be very low, uh, if anything. Um, if you did want to move forward, you know, with doing this project, this would be a project that if you did want to do it, it'd be next summer. Obviously, we wouldn't be doing it a year yet this winter. Um, I would still recommend probably planning on at least twenty five percent of it, uh, requiring local funding in case you find some issues that are uh, not eligible for the funding in the middle of design or in the middle of construction. But realistically, what's in front of you and what's described in that project here is intended to be one hundred percent uh, for funding through that program. So in terms of how to move forward with this, what we're looking for in terms of direction is just a general feeling. If you're comfortable with moving forward with the project, um, if you are, the next step would be uh, putting together uh, starting to put together the plans and specifications. I don't have a, an actual proposal included in this, but if you did want to move forward with this, at the next meeting, we'll provide those engineering costs um, for actually doing the project. I should point out as well, this funding is reimbursement funding, so it's not available until the project is one hundred percent complete, so.
That's state and federal?
That's regardless, the the city, the city would need to do, provide interim funding, so you'd have to have that funding source available or that amount of money to fund the project upfront and then you're reimbursed after the project is uh, at complete. So you have to be able to cash flow the project upfront.
Regardless of what though, that storm sewer does need repairing down there, is that correct? I looked at it too and it uh, already well back, so we're going to have to spend some money regardless of what.
Yeah, so it's an opportunity to try and get at least some of those costs, yeah, funded. I think at this time, Derek, there is probably some data collection we could do, um, we we could come back with the full engineering proposal at the next council meeting, but in the meantime, knowing that the weather conditions are liable to change here, while we've still got availability to get down there and and get any survey we need or any kind of things like that, we could get in, we could get authorization to go out and do just the data collection that we need to do, that will be necessary for the design uh, between now and the next uh, council meeting. And at the next council meeting, we could request the authorization for the complete then, the complete engineering activities. So if you'd be comfortable with that approach, you could authorize the data collection tonight and then direct us to prepare a full engineering proposal, come back to your next meeting.
Our mitigation efforts pretty successful. Have you done projects similar to this where it it works, it prevents the erosion?
We've done some riverbank or some stream bank stabilization projects. I haven't done that myself, but I know our our company has and we've got water resources engineers that that do these types of projects on a regular basis. And and there is pretty good science behind it, pretty good success rate of uh, the 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 uh, the armor banking that they can do on the stream banks or these uh, these types of weirs that they can put into to try and reduce the velocities, reduce that that turbulence to uh, minimize that erosion, that erosion of action of the water.
The part that's a little bit tricky with that specific question is whenever you're putting together a just a design or any type of improvement uh, with a stream or an area where water is going to be moving, you design it for a certain storm event, a water level event. In some cases, you can make that water level event like a pretty, pretty low likelihood or a pretty extreme event, but there's always going to be an event out there that's much, much bigger than what you designed for water. Uh, so that's, you know, if if that's what you're getting at, but sometimes, you know.
So you have this one designed for a three thousand year event?
Yes.
A hundred year event's great, but a hundred year. Events happen about every four years now.
Yeah, so you you really can't eliminate the risk, but you can.
It's it's a redoubt in risk, yeah.
Are your uh, your fees and costs associated with this are included in this total estimate?
They're included in total there, yeah.
On that, you know what, they're going to excavate, I know it's a four to one, basically how much are, what's the slope that you're down? What's the width of the green area that you're showing here?
So that sloped area, uh, I, the the riverbank is about four to five feet high, um, so twenty one five feet. It could be the the length of the slope. There'd be some stabilization they'd have to do up on the top where they pare it up.
That's kind of pretty close to that building now.
Yeah. There there is still quite a bit of space.
Well, closest fifteen twenty feet. Or shoes.
And and Derek, I know that in the in the letter lays out that there actually was some land area there lost in the flood, erosion that happened this spring. And the project is not to like, add fill down there to rebuild that area that was lost. It's essentially to take what's there now and stabilize it so that not more, that so that, we prevent the loss of anything further. So we won't be going down there and filling in the river and trying to replane that area that was lost.
So council.
I think we should move ahead and have them gather, gather more data, yeah, make a motion like that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm moving we plot the rates. Then we move ahead and get, gather more data, now second that one.
All in favor then?
I, I. All in favor, yeah, I got the highest pass.
Okay, councilman.
Well, we do have a couple of other items, just quick updates that that aren't actually on the agenda. First is the EDA, uh, Business Park Development. I know that um, Derek wanted to give an update on where we're at with the design and the plating. And there's a a couple of specific questions that we want to at least get you thinking about tonight, whether or not we get them actually answered tonight. But at least get them in the thought process so that we can get them answered, uh, and we need to have them answered, so.
So basically what we're working through right now is uh, putting together the documents that will come through for some middle uh, eliminating the final plat. Um, so that's realistically the next step that will be uh, coming to the city, uh, as preparation of those documents. So the actual plat documents, it is is what gets filed with the county and delineate where the right of way is, where the block lines are, that type of thing. But along with that is uh, basically a thirty percent design. Uh, we're laying out, you know, basic grades for the site, where the storm sewer is going to go, where the sanitary sewer is going to go, that type of thing. So our design staff is currently working through uh, those items right now. Um, one of the requirements that will be, uh, that goes along with the plots and middle is just some of the information that goes in the actual plat. We've got to have street names, we've got to have a name for the subdivision. So we just wanted to bring this up for discussion tonight, uh, since we'll leave that information as soon as next month, uh, for the seminoles. So basically what's uh, detailed out in the, in the uh, in the engineering update is a request for naming that that north south stretch of new roadway that will go in. Um, and then also the name for the, the actual subdivision itself. Right now, up to this point, we're just going to bring, uh, referring to it as Canyon Business Park. If there's something different, they can definitely make a reservation to do that.
They will bring up to that name for December, Ken, like, or do we have to do it tonight?
No, you can bring it up this summer, it doesn't have to be tonight.
It it doesn't have to be at that moment, uh, before we actually file the final plat.
December, okay?
Yeah, we just wanted to get you thinking about it so that, you know, you can come up with some ideas and, you know, have some, have conversations if you want or have some conversation with staff and like yourselves and.
Is that something we can have the entire town do that in any way, through the canyon lead or something? I mean, we can propose names or, you know, guard boulevard, but uh.
You don't make heights.
You know, I pulled up the the founding fathers' names and there's four main names there. Or like on that nineteen fifty or eighteen fifty map on the back wall, Red Wing Avenue was at one time called East Avenue. Well, there's nothing more east in Kenyon than this industrial park, you know, maybe maybe East Avenue or something. But instead of one person or three people coming up with that name, can we bring it to the town in any way? Um, there is a way, yeah, we could do, do it, uh, some type, or we can do a survey mechanism through the, Michelle in the library can set it up on the website, so then there'd be a link on there like name or vote on the name of the new Business Park Street or something. And then you'd click on it and it would go to a uh, program or whatever that keeps uh, you know, tally of online votes in effect that could be set up. We did that with the logo, when the new logo was adopted, there was several options or whatever, people kind of voted. So we we certainly could do that. It would be easier to have some set options for people to vote on, but I'm not trying to restrict it. But I'm just saying that versus having a wide open, you know, suggest a name thing is it's going to be like.
Can have it all back from.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
No.
So how do we come up with a set group of names per se?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's an imperfect science, imperfect, you know, kind of thing. Because on one hand, you know, you want to give public input into it and you can't have more public input than saying, you know. saying, you know, suggest names. So, but that's going to become...
Get out of the names.
Kind of a, yeah, go all over the place. So if you could come up with, it would just be at the council level, come up with some options.
Okay. When would we need that by?
I'm already kind of, I'm just going to throw this out here. I do like the idea of the Kenyan Business Park because it identifies with Kenyan, for number one. You're looking at a north side, north-south street, and there is a main street that will follow all the way through there. And I do know that our late mayor, Mike Engel, was very, worked hard at getting this together and I'm saying this here, I would like to at least consider naming it Engel Drive or something in honor of Mike.
Nice ring to it.
Yeah. So that's just my recommendation.
Yeah, it's a good point to keep in mind that this road is projected to continue on with future development all the way up to Highway sixty, so whatever name is set here with the first development, that name will continue all the way up to Highway sixty. So, and I think that's a, that's a very valid suggestion. Usually what we've seen is names will either be in honor of a civic leader, such as the former mayor, Mike, or it could be something that has kind of that optimistic, you know, that optimistic kind of feel to it, like Opportunity Drive or Enterprise Drive, you know, the kind of thing that makes people think, ooh, this is where I'm going to go and grow my business or locate my business. Otherwise, if, if you've got something that's significant to the community, I know the Roses, you know, some, some communities have themes that they like with their street names, whether it's types of trees or, or types of bushes or something along those. So those are kind of the main categories we'll see as kind of that, that optimistic name or the honorary name or something that's more along the lines of a city theme. So that might give you some thoughts of...
That's what I've got. Yeah, there's been discussion about this, naming it after Mike. I know the EDAs, I've talked about it a little bit, and Mike was, I mean, for whatever it's worth, I know from the start of this, you know, was the one that contacted the property owner, the original property owner, and really was, you know, instrumental in bringing this forward. So if there was a person to name it after, the street that is, and I know that we've kind of talked about different, the councils talked about different ways of trying to have a memorial or whatever, but this might be a really good public kind of way to do that, you know, a permanent kind of reference back to the former mayor, so.
B, is there anything more on this truck highway speed limit? Do I have?
That was the last item that we wanted to give a quick update on. At the last meeting, you guys talked about a speed study on that portion of Truck Highway sixty up on the east end of the city, and just to let you know that that information has been put together and the letter has been submitted to MINDOT to officially request that speed study. Derek's met with the, the local MINDOT rep to talk about that. Derek, I don't know if you've got any further information you want to provide based on your discussion with them?
What's, what's explained in the letter is just what he had shared with me during the meeting, just to kind of set expectations. Probably more than likely that a request to reduce the speed limit in that area would be, just based on their recent studies that they've done in the area. You know, one of the things that was brought up during the meeting was the idea, this section of highways with incentive limits to be a speed limit that we more typically see in a city, but one thing that, a traffic engineer over at MINDOT is kind of, they don't consider whether or not a road or highway or whatever is inside city limits or outside city limits, they're looking at the characteristics of land use, setbacks from the road, that type of thing, that ultimately drives the behavior of people using that road. So that was kind of good reasoning. He's going to look at the request, he's just waiting for that, depends on looking more, you know, into it in more detail once he gets it, but just to kind of set up expectations for a, 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 a,